I don't know, but it won't let me shut my sound off. So we're just gonna get out of it.
That did it to me too. That's why I don't get in anymore.
So this is an ongoing deal.
The flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So call the meeting to order and take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
Motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
Sorry, sorry. Second, move in second. For the discussion, as far as say I.
I.
Same sign. Motion will carry Rich. They are still like across this morning, so. Uh, that shouldn't take too long. I still think they've got, they got a few asphalt. There's one or two truck lanes of asphalt. Turned in primary plans Friday for the eighty three eight project, which is from sixty five to. Or something like that. And then, uh, next we'll be getting some plans put together for Donna B M C. Remember that's gonna be local pays, so. It'll probably be a March letting by time we get stuff turned in, but.
Can't do you?
Yeah, we're in a concrete building.
Gonna have to do it.
Have to, but I think.
Truck traffic.
I mean, if we left everything there and did asphalt, we'll just get a lot of that reflecting back through the asphalt, but. What we plan on doing a concrete one. It might be a little thick. We might go to seven inches just because by the quarry and so at six. So we'll be doing that. The next month we'll get the plans turned in, so.
Overlay on that.
Yeah, we'll just kind of be doing, we've done some patching in the past, so hopefully you don't disturb a whole lot. But I don't know what we'll do yet. I want to take a look at us more as if we're gonna widen shoulders as well with the concrete or not, like we've been doing on a lot of these other roads. I don't know the right away. I haven't looked at it in a long time, but I don't know if there's a chance to get a foot wedge or a two foot let or widen around it or not, but. Might help, might not. So we'll look at it. And maybe we can, because, because truck traffic can't really go into Joyce, maybe we'll thin the concrete out beyond the drive, beyond the access, maybe go to a six inch. Hate to kind of fluctuate things, but it's a cost saving measure to, if we're not gonna have truck traffic coming into Joyce from that side.
Early vertical, sorry.
Going into fertile from the east that maybe we don't need to keep it up that much here. We'll take a look at that when we put the lines and stuff together.
So the big. Problems gonna be detour.
Yeah.
And try to keep them open.
Yeah, my guess is that if we're doing concrete, my guess is the best place where we set up a plant is in the quarry, so maybe they could pull from both directions, leave one side open and then finish up, but. I'm just speculating about contractors.
Right. At least they have multiple gates that could eliminate their main gate.
Yeah.
It'd be tricky either way, so. Oh.
Work for them. All you can do, and it's gotta be done.
Right, right.
I know there's a lot of rock go out of there.
Yeah, and, and they'll, they'll, you know, they'll.
They'll plan.
They'll.
And it's for, I mean, they're gonna get a lot of the rock. I might, like. Because right there, I would assume that they'll get the rock for the project, you know, so whatever losses, but maybe they just. You know, it's for the type of project that way, it's a couple of weeks worth of inconvenience, because once we get cure on that thing, they'll probably let trucks back on it rather quickly, so just find a way out. Can I get out to the north on that gravel road?
Well.
There's a farm field there into, yeah. I don't figure.
We'll have to communicate with them a little bit. That's where we're at, in secondary roads maintenance. I haven't been out to the facility to see if anything's improved other than, I guess, as it's kind of been unplanned, so.
Anything else?
On that.
Couple of questions. So sort of process or permit if you wanted to fill in a road ditch in front of your property?
We, yeah, we have, we have the landowners just kind of talk to us first and then in order for, the way we document it, we use our driveway application to, to document what's going on.
Make sure you get proper drainage.
Right, because eventually there, you know, depending on what kind of ditch it is, it might need a culvert pipe in it just to maintain drainage, so we use that form to do it. So if they wanna fill in their ditch, so they need to come talk to us and fill out that.
Okay, okay. Whose responsibility, like at intersections where you got a lot of tree and blockage? Just notice myself driving around, I've had a couple complaints from other people. High profile vehicles, it gets really hard to see at these intersections. And I know we did some a few years ago on one over by me, and now it's growing back again, of course.
Okay, if it's in the right of way, I mean, then we'll.
That's a problem. A lot of these trees.
A lot of these are out back, so.
They hang over.
Yeah, so if, if it's becoming a site problem, I think the better way to handle it is for us, maybe talk to the landowner and say.
It's not so bad in a car. It's once you get up in like a combine or sprayer or a semi even or.
Depending what the trees are there for, you know, if they want a windbreak, then we start.
Yep.
Not gonna be fifteen feet off, just so.
Several of these I can think of just driving around the last week or so are just old abandoned groves that aren't taken care of.
Yeah, I've got a list of them, but we don't want to get into the habit of getting too far back either. I don't know. You know, right of way is still sixty six foot total, so I mean, you get to an intersection, you should be able to see, but depending what kind of tree it is, they could be growing over and down, you know, it's part of the. If you got a list of them, just give them.
I don't right now. It's just something I was thinking of and, you know, yeah, I could drive around, make a list again and.
Yeah, if you, I mean, we don't always see it when we're out about, we look at it, we're.
Last thing a guy running a maintainer's painting, he's just making sure that he's getting his intersections graded out proper and.
Yep.
I thought in the past we would go.
We, we have, but. Cause I've had somewhere.
We're doing a lot of that, but I mean, if you start hitting trees. What I don't like to see is the guys go out with the yard mower and then because there's a branch hanging over a fence, so it's not doing anything, and they put it sideways and start mowing a, I don't like that.
No.
That, that cutting that branch off isn't doing anybody any favors anyway, but if it's a site distance thing in an intersection.
Mostly is if they were cut back now boom trucks, you know, they're either gonna last close to ten years before they're an issue again, so, but it's just the. Growing out. There's a couple places where if you, you know, I have folding extensions of my combine, but if you have the big top around, you're there, you're gonna, you're gonna hit that tree by changing over. And especially if you had, if you can't pull over, you're meeting somebody, you know.
Yeah, if there's a, if there's something that's on private property and it does pose a hazard, we can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, public utilities, they just go in and hack them up.
Yeah, they do.
But, which is not nice either.
There's some of them really butchered trees.
Oh, yeah. Well, it looks terrible when you got a power line with trees growing up, I think, but.
And we can always evaluate the, the site triangles at the intersection.
Yeah, and I get a chance of.
Yeah, I think you got some of them.
Or it could be stuff we could do this one.
Yep, for sure.
If we don't lose snow, then that'd be nice.
Right.
Okay, guys, anything else you guys? Okay. Okay, discussion, possible action on utility permit worthwhile solar west LLC. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Yeah.
Get a chance to look.
It's all electrical conduits. And you're over Rich. Is there going to be, like, the places where there's tandem crossings, are they gonna be individual bores, or are they gonna maybe have a, I suppose, if you're boring it, you can't really put a. Structure and make them all cross in one area, which could be. Digital bores, but I didn't know exactly what the plan was. It was gonna be individual bores on each one.
Yeah, we typically individually bore because we have to keep them electrically separated or thermal.
I figured there was, there was that, but I wasn't quite sure.
Would it be helpful to just introduce this while we're applying? Take a look at this, okay. I'm taking alarm, Director of Development within Energy. So we've got the utility right of way crossings that we've applied to here and the train engine road use agreement. We've been working with Rich on that. Isaac wasn't able to be here, but I know he's been working with him. So as you know, this is a project that we permitted a while ago back in twenty nineteen with the Iowa Utilities Commission, and now we're in a position to move it forward. We're looking to start construction in the spring, but we're in a place where. We've got a contractor and engineers and we're trying to finalize our designs. We can get like ready for construction. We're starting to lock in crews for the spring. We also wanna start pre-seeding part of the site this fall, so it's not a muddy mess in, in the spring, so. To finalize our design, we wanna make sure that we've got the locations correct for the utility railway crossings, but we need to go under county infrastructure. And that's also where the drainage agreement comes in as well, because that's also county infrastructure. So. Being that we wanna use some county roads this fall and we wanna finalize our designs, we've put this package together. You'll remember a couple of weeks ago, you approved a single version of this, and this is the more complete package. It's what we expect to, to use. And so, you know, if there are locations that we need to, you know, get some feed, feed that, we're happy to do that and then incorporate that into our design, but we're just trying to make sure that we've got all that we need to. Finalize our construction plans from spring. Sorry, Rich.
Nope, it's good. It's whining on there. I've read through it.
So what you're referencing, Rich, is that?
Yeah, there's a couple of those.
I looked at it, went, wow.
And you look at it, it's not a very wide swath, anything about the spacing, but just one of those things. This is, it's not open cut, so it shouldn't really be that big of an effect. I don't remember, you know, you guys are boarding that big of a line.
I have a question. You sent out your map.
Yeah.
Originally you'd sent out, back when we were doing the development agreement, the maps of where the windmills are going. So now you've got this blue outline where this map is for the solar farm. You've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight at the top end. How come you got eight windmills in your solar farm?
We have some landowners that have signed agreements for both, and so we've got facilities nearby, but they are. Completely separate electrically and like in terms of the facilities, they're two different entities. So they're, they're proximate to each other, but they're not combined in any other way than just being geographically nearby. Does that?
Your question would be, is there both possibly solar panels and wind turbines on property?
You've got possibly solar panels and wind turbines on the same property.
Will that happen?
That could, that could happen. I mean, it's on. The same piece of grass.
We also do ice throw studies and we set back internally of how far away the turbine can be from solar panels.
What is that?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have a number off the top of my head, um, but I, but also I think it might be helpful. I have. This map of the solar project in the context of the wind project. Uh, I know that you were asking about this, so that might be helpful just to see where the crossings are in, in the wind project.
Yeah, you've kind of got that up here. I can see the crossings and the fact that that line's going up to this, to these wind turbines up in here.
Enos, is there concern that they're, that we're combining electrically the cables for the solar project and the wind project could, because they're totally different?
It did cross my mind, but I wasn't sure, and that's why I was asking.
Just to answer that question affirmatively, different, like, different projects, different LLCs.
Even though those windmills are inside your solar.
Completely totally electrically separate.
They'll have a separate crossing.
So we're not here today. Like, this is not about the wind.
I realize that.
Yeah.
But that was one of my, that, that's the first thing. When I looked at this outline, that's the first thing that popped in my head. Was we've all of a sudden consumed these in here, and we've got all these windmills sitting in there.
The only place that the wind and solar could. Come together is, is at that point of interconnection where there will be a some eventual substation, right? That's where I T C would technically.
That's down south of hundred and five, and that's where those two we approved with one for wind and one for solar. That's where those go underneath that four hundred and fifty street, was it? Something like that, something like. Yeah, that's the, that's the two things that caught my eye was this cluster.
Yeah, and.
And then the fact that we got both windmills and solar within the project area of solar.
Right.
And in the project area of wind. So.
Anything else, Rich, if you've got a concern about?
I just wanted to, you know, I don't know that this agreement looked a lot different than past agreements we've had. Um, but I do know that what happened in the last agreement came to. Upgrading the roads to take the traffic, and this is more wind. I don't believe we're gonna have.
The weight.
On the one, the weights, I don't think we're gonna have the same weights as we were, but I wanna make sure that if we are upgrading some of the roads. That we're using the county specifications for rock, not that we're just gonna, you guys are gonna grab whatever you want and put down there because we do have a gradation specification for that.
Right.
And one other thing in here, and, and I don't know, you know, it all depends. There was a, 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 a sentence in the, in the obligations of Worth County that said, on a negotiated case by case basis, Worth County informs no removal. On the haul roads and on its roads that are required to access solar arrays. We're not gonna make that a priority for us. We've got other people we need to prioritize before a facility like that. I just wanted to make that clear and, and after reading that, it's like, we're not gonna, you guys are gonna wait. You know, we've got our constituents to take care of.
I pulled this out of. The Deer, the, yeah, like I, I kind of just drafted it. I tried to make it appropriate on the solar.
There was some.
There's a lot more in here than there was in here.
Not a lot.
I have the commissioning, yeah, but I tried to.
You're right.
Yeah.
But.
I wasn't sure, yeah, I wasn't sure what was the priority, so I would, if you wanted to make a motion, that.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, if it, if it becomes an issue, you know, a lot of this is, we wanna make sure our specifications are being met for things like that, and just to let you guys know, we're not gonna prioritize our.
Yeah, that's why I said it's a negotiated case by case.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's something in this contract you'd want to see changed?
I don't need to see it changed. I just wanted to bring it up now and say, we're not gonna prioritize opening up their roads if they're on a level, you know. If they're on a road that we normally aren't following, they're gonna wait. We're gonna get our other stuff done first and we'll come back and.
I don't think there's any, but we might use in that area that they're right now.
But we're not making it a priority.
No, yeah, definitely.
When it comes to the agreement on the roads, I think we ought to have a lawyer look at it.
We did send it to both, uh, the county attorney and Eric Optograph. I know he's not working on the solar project.
Eric sent a reply that said it's not part of his job and that if he was available to be hired to take a look at it. I think we ought to hire him to take a look at it, because the one thing I'm not voting for is this thing is a fifty year deal. That's out. I'm not gonna hand tie people's supervisors thirty, forty, fifty years from now locked into this deal. That one out in Deer Creek never had anything like that in it.
I don't know that that's true.
I went back and compared the two of them. I got them both.
What's the term on Deer Creek?
Nothing. It's just a road and use agreement terms for doing the project. I don't think that if this thing comes to, I mean, even the state of Iowa uses a twenty year. And if this thing comes to termination in twenty to twenty five years and you redo it, I think you should have to come back under, if there's any changes the next twenty to twenty five years, what those supervisors decide at that time. I don't think they should be locked up for fifty years.
A new, a new agreement at the life or the end of life of the project, so if they come out and repower something in twenty five years, then let that board of supervisors take care of it?
That's right. I don't think we should tie their hands, and I do think that we should have Eric take a look at this thing. I don't care if it costs three hundred dollars an hour. I think he should have, I think he should take a look at, to make sure we're covered on the thing. So that's just my opinion. That's the thing that caught me was I was going through it. It was a lot more detailed than what the Deer Creek one was. There was some stuff pulled in there from the development agreement. And I seen that deal on, this is in effect for fifty years, and I just was against that, and I still am.
Are you thinking, Enos, the term that you're concerned about is for the road, road specifically?
I'm talking about the right of ways and the roads and that.
Okay, uh, we're, we're fine with a, I mean, the road use is. It's not a requirement in our view, but we think that it's important to have agreement about how we use county infrastructure, so if you wanna reduce term, that's fine. Just the drainage, when you typically brand easements for drainage, are those perpetual? Are those turn, like, how are, how do those normally work?
Easements for drainage is a, what about?
Well, because I think that this agreement has effectively, because we'll be processing drainage infrastructure, it's giving an agreement for our conduct. Crossing that infrastructure.
We're probably talking more about, now we're probably talking less about the right of way portion, but the county drainage districts.
Right.
Right.
The laterals and stuff, what's in it?
Well, your mains more than anything. I mean, we don't really control too many laterals other than lap B, one B or whatever, which would be a main line.
And your private title stuff is all.
Private title is between you and the landowners. It'd be anything that we quote manage or whatever as far as. County main.
Yeah.
And I think there's a couple of them. You two would have listed, but.
Another thing is I haven't seen our county attorney's opinion on this either.
Well, you know, he walked in here four years ago and said, if this was a DUI, it's right up my alley. If it's wind and solar, I'm all aboard. Let's get a new attorney.
Yeah.
Isn't that not what he said?
I, I remember that conversation, yeah.
So I'm not even going to him. If you don't know anything about, I think it's good that he says, I don't know anything about solar and wind, so get somebody else.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but I agree. So I just, the chat, there was in a response, I would email it from a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, whatever it's been now.
We could go at this.
So. So what, what, I, I agree. I mean, I think we just gotta, Rich, if there's some changes, I know we can have a conversation. We can put it in the good old boys club of verbiage, but I, I think it needs to be on paper. Um, your changes, you want me to?
Well, and it's the fact that it was, it does say negotiated anyway, but I just wanted to bring that up and say that we're not gonna prioritize that, but I will, I'll look through it. A little bit closer and maybe add the verbiage that any improvements meet the county's specifications.
That makes sense. I think if you wanna say on a non-priority negotiating.
So, yeah, I could do that too, but I just, I was passing through it. I'm like, oh. I don't want them to think that they're, and, and I, I don't think that you guys expect that, but I just wanted to make it clear, because we've got, there are times where it's hard to get out and get the stuff done the way it is and then to have. Yeah, because somebody else knocking on the door saying, I need to get in at first, right?
Well, I think we ought to have Eric review it, and then the changes that we want, we all send emails to Eric of what caught our eyes. Take a look at this, this and this, and that's where that would come in.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll make that a motion that we get Eric Optograph involved at looking at that.
I'll say that.
Move in second. Any further discussion? I think none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion will carry. I'll have Eric look at it. Hopefully you can get, hopefully you can do it this week and maybe have it back on the agenda for.
That'd be fine. What are you, what's the status of the right of way crossings? Are you tabling that? Are you making a motion on that?
That was, you're, you're talking about the permits?
Yeah.
You're talking, yeah.
Oh. I guess we got right on.
My motion was on the right.
Right, yours was.
I, I kind of just get around.
On the road and drainage agreement, correct, yeah. So as far as utility permits, are you questioning that?
That's, I already questioned what I was gonna question.
Okay.
Why, we got windmills inside the boundaries of the solar project.
Okay.
And the other thing I said that caught my eye, which you already mentioned, was there's like ten. Lines going underneath hundred and five in a short distance in there.
Which is probably not uncommon.
But considering I'm not an engineer on solar, I have no idea whether that's common or uncommon.
Yeah.
Each, uh, each feeder carries about five megawatt AC, I believe is the term, and so in order to. So they all like connect back here. Uh, this is kind of what sits under the panels, and you can see these, sorry, you can see these feeders here. Uh, so they come in through here and connect to the inverter, but, um. Yeah, each one can only carry so much because of the.
And that's why you got ten of them going right at hundred and five right there.
Yeah.
Plus other places.
You have to have. I have a question. How many megawatts is this solar farm?
This is three hundred megawatts total.
I've never. Had you ever sent us? Emails on the solar farm itself as the way, where these solar panels are gonna be within this project outline?
Just.
I'd never seen nothing on, we just, we haven't seen very much on solar.
I mean, this is dating back to twenty nineteen and county.
I'm still saying we haven't seen, are they?
Is that part of, part of the permitting process, the Iowa utility part?
Yeah.
So it would be.
I already filed quarterly updates.
Yep. I get emails from them, I know once, well, and what was, what, what was going on, but they were all legal stuff too, so.
I'm happy to come back. It's off, and she'd like to.
Yeah. Well, Enos is right. We have, we haven't heard much. We hear about it. We hear grim ones a lot, but we're not landowners, so we don't get in on the final details, everything, but. We've heard there's two thousand, three thousand, five thousand acres. I don't know where it's at.
We don't know what's going on.
So, you know, um, as, as far as details on that, we have kind of been left out of loop on the solar. It hasn't dropped out for a number of years.
Yeah, and admittedly it has been quiet for years, and now it's picking back up, and we can certainly do a better job of making sure you're in the loop, and this is, you know, why we're here, to put an effort to do that and make sure that we're on the same page as we try to. Head towards spring.
Even the landlords can't answer my questions. They'll call me up and wanna know what I know, and I say, I don't know, you're the ones with the contracts. I said, don't you have a contact? Well, you know, it's like.
We've had a couple landowner events lately, and, yeah, we're definitely ramping up our, our efforts as, as this thing before.
Rich, you go show up the permit?
Yeah, I assume that your crossings, your boring will be marked at the right of way.
Yeah.
I don't know, like, I know on some of the wind towers you got, this is in other, on other wind farms, you got the big boxes at the end of the right of way that, then things are bored, but I just wanted to make sure that. And, and I assume that they would be, I just wanted to clarify that there will be markings at the right of way for each bore, so that if we're out doing something with managers, and then we'll, we'll do one calls like we normally do, like, just. In the effect that, you know, we see a, maybe we see a suck hole and, okay, well, it makes sense. There's a bore in here, maybe they hit some, you know, just to see that everything's gonna be labeled in the right of way.
Yeah.
Yeah, other than that, I don't have a whole lot of issues with. Most of the games are utility crossing.
I'll motion to approve the utility permit application.
With your signature.
I'm second to.
Moving second. Is there any further discussion? I think none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
I can work with Eric as well, so make sure he's had a copy.
Yeah, we'll get specifics.
Yeah, I'd like to.
To Eric.
We, oh, yeah, it's like A J said, we don't know whether it's a thousand acres, three thousand acres. We don't know. I didn't, I didn't know until you sent this out where it was going, basically. I knew it was over west of your support.
When we come back next, if the supervisors are entertaining, we can give a brief presentation with maps.
He's acting your son.
You're a real engineer?
Usually you guys don't sign these, but this is a, no, I do project, so I'm having you guys sign it. I'll scan this in and get it sent out to you guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Discussion possible action county road crossing ordinance. So I'm from Metro County, you passed, correct?
Yeah.
We read over.
I don't know if you guys read over or not.
I read through it, and of course, again, it's all legal.
It is, and I don't know after reading that, if you guys had questions you wanted to discuss.
So anything I saw on there was reading through, trying to read through things, some of this code, some of this actually happened, but the, uh, is it Premer County that. Uh, summit was questioning in court. So as of yet, there being questioned, hasn't been acted on. Metro counties could be questioned.
Well, and it's not even, there are other people in line before us.
Okay, well, I didn't know how far down that.
Well, I mean, Wright County, I think, originally drafted this in Whipple, and then other counties started adopting it. Now, I know there's, there's questions, and I know, I didn't send you guys all of the email conversations that the board and I had over there and with Tim Whipple, but. I did send you some code sections that were in question as to whether there was, and, and there's interpretation and, and all this. I'm not a lawyer.
Right.
And a lot of people don't understand it either, but there were code sections that. Some individuals think that it's in violation of the code of Iowa because we're putting restrictions on setbacks, we're setback, but it depends on what it is. Then the other code section says, you guys gotta get permission from us to do anything in the right of way, and here's what we're requiring you to do, so. I would say maybe look through it and, and see if there's any other individ, you know.
It's not a project crushing ordinance.
It shouldn't be, you know.
What I read, what it is, is a process.
It's just.
Yes, you could, you could have some emotional bolts that way, but it is a process where you have to file the permits and get permission.
It's an infrastructure protecting thing that should have been in place fifty, sixty years.
Right, but.
I didn't think of this thing fifty, sixty.
No, because we weren't, we didn't have private, large private utilities crossing.
Yeah.
There's a difference between public and private utilities, and the code takes care of the public defined utilities. Now we're getting into private things, these.
Yeah.
We won't, you, you know.
And that's not gonna end.
Right, so, so. One person will say, get the cart in front of you, let's get everything, get the horse in front of the cart this time and make sure we've got our ducks in a row, and if it's challenged, I mean.
The only thing is we'd have it in place. If it's challenged, it doesn't matter, like, it's a lawsuit we're gonna be involved in because we did it. I mean, so I don't really have any trouble passing.
It could be amended, it can always be amended like any other ordinance, if there is some.
There are that, you know.
Well, there are, there are, that, you know, there are setback requirements in this ordinance, but there's also a waiver process in that ordinance that says, hey, look, if we can't. A lot of it has to do with ingress, ingress and intersections and some people could take it to the extreme. When I, I wanted to, there are clarifications a little bit on ingress, egress, because we've got a lot of field driveways that get used twice a year. Do we really need to restrict everything based on these driveways that are used once or twice a year versus a private residence driveway that's getting used daily? I think that's more important than, so that, that's where the waiver process can come and help us. Or look, we've got a, a little covert here. This, what are we willing to look into to, to make things work? Not that we don't want things to work.
Right.
We just want to have a little bit of say in what's happening, instead of them coming and saying, we're just gonna put it here. The other side argues, we're violating the IUC, because the IUC approves the route. And I, my, my complaint or my argument is, they may approve the route, but everything says you gotta get everything approved from everybody else before they stamp it.
Right.
So they can approve the route, they can approve the corridor, but you still gotta abide by our rules and everybody else's rules before it gets stamped. So I'm not a lawyer, but that's my interpretation of what has to happen, and that's where I think they're wrong, but.
We've got a lot, we've got a lot of drainage districts and a lot of money from every farmer in this county that's invested, and we need to protect that as much as we can.
It's not to say that that pipe isn't going to go across or under that drainage, but they just.
If it's gonna go under, we want to make sure it's far enough under.
It's like everything else, do it right.
Exactly. And keep in mind.
Just plow right through it, not.
Keep in mind, this is just.
It's an issue.
The right of way, fence line to fence line, there's all this thing covers whatever happens.
Private property.
Private property and, 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 and the other argument is, well, now we might have to reroute things. Well, if you work with them and you work with us, there wouldn't need to be a reroute. It's not like you go get your permissions from the landowner and then you just can do whatever you want.
But that's the problem.
We're a landowner too, in a sense.
Yeah, and, and some people think, well, we shouldn't have to, we should go do what we want. Well, that's not the case anymore. You know, you, you've got to start working together and it may be a process, but that's just cost of doing business. So, it, it just, there's gotta be protection out here for, for what, what this county has invested in over the last.
And I don't know if you guys want to have. Their attorney review it just to make sure, I mean.
Well, I think the attorneys reviewed it up the.
Up the ladder.
An attorney wrote it. And I mean, I know the document I sent you guys doesn't have any of, you know, it still says Metro County on it, whatever, but um.
So do we need a public hearing process?
You will need a public hearing.
So this would be just.
So we need that, we need to basically.
Yep.
retrofit it to our language.
Yep.
And then it can go out for post, public notice if we want to move forward.
Basically, a motion we need to proceed with this agreement and set up the public hearing.
Well, this ordinance.
Of this ordinance, yeah.
We'll have to have three readings, a whole nine yards if we want to.
If you change the read, or the wording, any, do you want a, an attorney to?
If we're gonna change any wording other than just Worth County versus whatever.
Well, right now, everything just says Metro County and it's got like the fees and stuff like that. The fee stuff is separate that, you know, that I sent you about the, the permitting. The, the nuts and bolts of that ordinance itself that has.
What's that? Any problem with fees or anything?
I don't have any problem with that. And I don't think an attorney's gonna have a problem with the fees that we set up.
No, I just meant if you're changing anything.
wording, you know.
Once you start putting the document together and have verbiage in there and you start looking at it, and you have a reading and say, well, I don't change this. Now you gotta start to, it happened in Metro, you had to start the process over again, and then it's another.
No, I think.
No, if we change the county name and the fees, we shouldn't have to have an attorney involved.
Jeff should be able to prove it.
That would be if we changed some wording.
If there's wording in sections that want to get revamped, we'll have to, that probably has to do with it. Otherwise, I think.
And I think the, the bigger thing is, is that, you know, Wright County and Bremer County. We are, as county engineers, trying to keep things consistent too, because. Many companies know, well, if I go to this county, I gotta abide, then things are always changing. And then you're, you know, if you've got offsets and then right, setbacks and things that are different for each county. It makes things difficult. We don't want to be difficult, but we also want to make sure things are protected.
Joining counties, so we need to.
Consistency is always easy.
There's only gonna be thirty counties here in a few years anyways, right?
I hope not.
So may as well.
I was like forty-five.
Safe laws.
Thirty-one. You start, how'd you come up with thirty-one?
Well, I guess, I would uh.
Let's say that, yeah.
Make a motion to um, move forward on this county road crossing ordinance, get the language put in that would uh, retain the word county. And if there's any fee structures, then we can look at that while this is being done and then we can set our hearing of the future date. So I'd make a motion, move forward.
For a second.
I second that.
Okay, moving second. Any further discussion? During none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion will carry.
Who's gonna do that? Rich, Jeff?
What's that?
Yeah.
I mean, I could.
Rich, you can change the verbiage.
Basically, uh, go into Microsoft Word and, and replace Worth with, or Mitchell with Worth and.
And send it to Jeff with immediate response, please.
Well, you can do that. I'll carbon copy everybody into it, but.
Is there, do you have like fees that are in there? Look them over.
We, I, I gotta look.
Look them over again.
The fees, the fees.
Focus on that. We can change that.
The fees that I have for my department to review things are different because the wages are a little bit different. And that's not something I ask to be done right away. I think the bigger thing is get the ordinance in place because, in my opinion, this ordinance is. Zero to once in a career, you know, it affects private utilities, private hazardous.
And can the piece change without doing a whole ordinance over again?
They're separate. It's a separate, it's not necessarily tied to the ordinance. It's a separate fee schedule that I, that we can modify as we. I think it's more of a resolution.
Which we should.
It's a resolution.
Fast the ordinance first and then.
Yeah, fast the ordinance and then have fees attached to it and then have a fee so there.
Because the ordinance references permits and fees.
Correct.
And so that's just a separate scheduled events that doesn't, and it's a resolution. It's not like you have to have a hearing, so.
Yeah. Works for me. All right.
That's all.
Sounds good. Okay. Project update change orders. This is why you're here.
That is why I'm here. Um, quick update on the secondary roads maintenance facility office building projects, both buildings have erupted. Um, I would expect to see foundations going in probably within two to three weeks. I know on the maintenance shed, they're waiting on rebar. Um, and then to show up ready to go on the ground. And the office building, Scott said he's just waiting on concrete contractor show up and do it. It's uh, girl teacher, wait, knows it's doing the concrete work for him on that one, so. Get going on those. Um, I emailed Jackie last week, a supplemental agreement for our engineering agreement. Um, our agreement approved back in December was for final design services only. At that time, we didn't know construction duration, uh, level of effort required for the construction phase of the project. So the supplemental agreement, it's a total not to exceed a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And I have this broken down with general construction administrative services, which is. Um, change orders, pay estimates, shop drawing review, testing reports review, et cetera, ninety, just under ninety-one thousand. And then resident review services, hundred and five thousand two hundred. Um, I use timeframe of twelve months and two days per week with a person onsite verifying, checking, documenting everything that's going on. I talked to Rich about this some, I think that's about the area. We landed on that as far as his comfort level as well. So I guess the part today, we're gonna present that, discuss it, and so I'm calling.
Yeah. Yeah, it's part of the process, so. I don't think we're gonna stop over.
No.
That, Eric. Well. Um. I don't have a question now. I don't have any questions on it.
I don't need it.
Hold on, bud. Can you motion that out?
I would say so.
All motion to uh, accept or approve the uh. Agreement with me, Sean Campbell on the construction project.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moving second. Need for a discussion? And none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion will carry. Okay. Anything else on that right now?
Well, I haven't answered any questions. About the conservation building they about.
Oh, done.
I had electrical, mechanical, final walkthrough, week and a half ago. Architectural, everything else will be tomorrow morning. And we'll get them a punch list, get that wrapped up. Budget accepted. Okay. I see we didn't get a pay, pay request again, so we shouldn't be about done with that, all right? Pretty much that.
Good.
All right. Natural gas? We're waiting on gas. I'm pushing. And you haven't heard any. Yeah, I'll get you enough to get after Thursday. That was last Thursday and I haven't heard. Great. Good.
Perfect. All right. Drainage. So. Motion.
I'll, I'll take them. I'll make a motion to approve the drainage. I'll second that motion.
Okay, moving second. Need for a discussion? During none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion will carry. So I need to appoint some, there's no work workers, anything, is there?
No.
Appointment, classification commissioners for DD one, DD forty and DD seventy-four. We have a list, right?
Yeah, I sent you guys the lists.
I didn't, I, I didn't see.
I guess I might have missed that, Joe. So I'm sure you did.
It's, it's, this was all assigned to the studies. Is this the Mike Stevens and the?
Yeah.
Nathaniel Josephs?
Well, it's like those, those are.
They're, the commissioners we've got out there.
Two, correct. So it could be one of those.
You said it could be the same for all three, I think, so. I can't remember what day I sent it to you guys.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to make use of Mike Stevens and Nathaniel Josephs.
Okay, sir, second.
I'll second that. They're not in, they're not in the area, really?
Apparently not, you said, they, you said they're.
One forty and seventy-four is down here. Mike's out here and Joseph lives up by north of the casino.
So.
Yeah, it's good to me.
Okay, no further discussion. Yep, just call them, tell them that they've been appointed.
Yeah.
I know a lot to work out their schedules. I'm for Mike's harvesting, so.
I'll let um, I know what.
Anchor here.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion will carry. Is that it for drainage? This would be.
Payroll.
Payroll.
I'll make a group payroll plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, need for a discussion? And none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Reports, sheriff, give a motion to approve the reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
I'll second.
Moving second, any further discussion? Or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Payroll, no payroll eligibility?
No.
Wicker?
No.
Tax abatement and tax suspension.
You got those emails that I sent you?
Oh, with more? There's more than those two?
Well.
Last ones I got was on the city of Northland with a couple of them. And then it was the other one.
These were ones that Jake sent out later.
Oh.
Somebody that wants a tax suspension, they'll pay it, they have parameters that they can ask for a suspension and um. They'll pay the later date, but the other two are drainage. Yeah, and US won't pay them.
US Fish and Wildlife, I read that.
Yeah.
They never do.
We, yeah, we've done it in the past, so. We're just gonna have to reassess in the future. Yeah, pretty much.
So you want a motion on the whole thing or you want it divided?
Uh, let's divide them.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax abatements for US Fish and Wildlife.
For a second.
I'll second.
Moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion will carry. So now with the uh, tax suspension.
I'll motion approve tax suspension.
I'll second it.
Moving second, need for a discussion? During none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion will carry. All right.
Now, hide these on.
Okay, so yeah, the resolution.
Yep.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. Um, so you have on your agenda today, um, a resolution from Dorsey and Whitney. Um, to one, um, authorize the use of a preliminary official statement um, in connection with the financing of the urban renewal bonds. And then also to repurpose um, a portion of the twenty twenty-three A bond proceeds uh, to pay for some of these facility projects. And then after that, I do have a finance plan I want to go through in detail to kind of just go through uh, the rest of the steps that uh, the board will be going through. Uh, and so the board has uh, received a copy of that preliminary official statement document. This document um, has been used with all of your other um, financings. This one is specific to these bonds. It has um, the details of, you know, what these bonds will be spent on, um, the terms. And then in addition to that, it has a lot of information on the county, including things like history of tax rates, history. Um, of uh, all of your fund balances, top ten taxpayers, um. And all of your outstanding debt, um, which is just that twenty twenty-three A, but it has a lot of information in what is pertinent uh, to potential investors. Um, Northland um, has put this document together um, in conjunction um, with the county. We've used all the publicly uh, provided information and we've worked with uh, Jackie and her office to get um, information that we can't see publicly. Um, and have done a due diligence call to put this document together. It is a document of uh, Worth County, and so the board is uh, required to um, uh, review and approve it as well. It still is in preliminary form. We do not actually um, approve, uh, finalize it until the bonds are sold. Um, and we have final numbers put in place. So um, if there are any comments from the board that I can take for direction, I can take those with me today. The board can still approve this resolution. Um, if not, um, we'll take that resolution and we can start using this document uh, to disseminate out to potential investors.
Ready to go.
Yeah, this is well. So.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Um, and do you guys want to, there's kind of two parts to that resolution. I'll just kind of hold off real quick before you approve that. In addition to that, it does repurpose uh, the twenty twenty-three A bonds. Um, and they're, um, in order to use those funds towards uh, use funds towards these projects. Um, I did want to note when I was looking at it, there's in section three, there's a not to exceed amount. Um, I'd like to have that um. Um, actually a, adjusted and approved to one point six million. Um, just based off of the numbers, uh, the updated numbers I received from Jackie um, to, um, on the twenty twenty-three A bonds. So we'll be moving a not to exceed of one point six million instead of one point two three five.
So change motion to include the repurposing the series twenty twenty-three A bond proceeds and for all to not exceed one point six million.
One second. Good. Moving second, is there any further discussion? During none, we'll do a little, what, low bird?
Aye.
Stone, aye, maybe, aye, the resolution will pass.
So I'll just, I'll just um, change that number in there and have you sign it next time.
This one later.
That is an engagement of Dorsey.
Dorsey.
Yeah.
Motion to. That.
Yeah, that's separate. That's still part of the project.
Part of the project.
Although should do the Dorsey, Whitney.
I'll second. Any further discussion? During none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Here.
Perfect. Um, and then just, just a few minutes to go over through the finance plan, uh, just to talk about the next things that'll be on um, on the agenda. Um, we do have a special meeting coming up, so I wanted to. On the agenda, um we do have a special meeting coming up, so I wanted to just address the board and make sure we are ready. Um, ready to go ahead, um cause the next meeting that you'll be meeting, you'll actually be locking in interest rates. Um, so we have a finance plan, um and there is like a green border or a. A double border, if it's not um printed out, it'll be dark, dark gray, um and it'll say Worth County, Iowa. Um, four million seven hundred and sixty five thousand, general obligation, urban renewal bonds, series twenty twenty five A. Just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at, so this is to uh finance um the uh. Facilities projects, um it will be a general obligation backing. Um, so the county could uh, the county could impose a debt service levy, but intends to use the TIF revenues from the windmills. To pay for these bonds. The repayment term, um you'll start paying, have your first in- interest payment, June one of twenty twenty six. And then you'll have two um, two payments in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, so this will be a very short term bond. Um, to finance these projects, uh all expected to be within that TIF revenue. Uh, based off of the short term of these bonds, uh the county will not be um going out for a rating. Um, that rating has an additional fee associated with it, um additional work with it. Um, when the bonds are shorter like this, that um the cost associated doesn't necessarily pay for itself. And um, in addition to that, if you remember with the last bonds, we had a little bit longer term on that, we had insurance on those bonds. Um, that uh will not be on these bonds this time either, just based off of that two year payback, um it doesn't pay for itself.
Easy enough.
Yeah. Alright. Sounds good, anything else?
Um, I did wanna note that there will be a special meeting to lock in interest rates on October fifteenth, that is a Wednesday. Should be a short meeting, we'll have some numbers to go over it. Um, it's up to the board on what time in the morning you'd like to have that. Um, the reason that it's a special meeting is. Is due to um Monday morning is um on the thirteenth of your regular board meeting, is actually a um. A, a holiday for Columbus Day and the, and the markets are closed, so we'll have them, we'll go into the bond market on Tuesday, and then the board will. Award it on uh Wednesday morning.
Okay, so it's October fifteenth, you said?
Yes.
Wednesday.
What was that?
Eight thirty?
That works perfectly. That works for you guys.
Yeah, I can do that.
Let's just do a Zoom meeting.
That'd be great.
Last time we just came here and did a Zoom.
Alright, someone up here, you Jackie.
Unless there are any questions from the board, um just wanna make sure that um there were no questions, and the next time. You'll see me either in uh. Uh, we'll be locking in those interest rates and getting you ready to close and get those bonds by November fourteenth, or twelfth.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
We're moving you along.
Alright.
Thank you, Heidi.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, the rental drive presentation, which AJ and I have heard you're gone.
I watched it on.
You did, yeah, okay.
You're up to speed.
Look through the.
Is he on right now?
Yeah, good, good morning, gentlemen.
Saw a contract for seventy two thousand for everything.
For everything. And we kind of, the discussion kind of grew that day as we were.
Was there anything else that I was supposed to get?
That should be it. Do you have any questions for him? Basically, is where's the funds gonna come from would be probably one of the questions that we're gonna have.
Michael, I had a question, so. In your experience with other buildings, as far as the, the moisture testing and stuff you did, where would you rate us?
Yeah.
With, with like our courthouse or. Office compared to other, other buildings, are we better, worse, right in the?
Uh, you're, you, you're leaning on the wetter side of a lot of buildings we've looked at. Particularly the courthouse, that's a very, very wet building.
It's because we're built on an underground lake.
That's right. Um, the public uh, public health department building, that definitely had pretty high moisture readings on almost all walls that we checked. Um, the treasurer's office building was probably the, the least wet, but however, there was definitely moisture present there.
Basically, you're sucking the moisture below the, be- below the basements. Which in turn pulls it out of the walls.
That's right, yeah, we drained all the moisture out of all, I mean, we, we guarantee against all the moisture out of the masonry and concrete of the building, but. In truth, you know, we removed excess moisture out of all the building materials.
So if there's any mold in there, you're drying it up, which kills it.
That's right, I mean, we don't claim to get rid of the mold, but we know if you get rid of the moisture, the mold dies.
And that's been our experience.
Yeah.
This is basically a health issue.
And this building, you know, even if we did do different office, start this building, I'm going away for the court systems.
Neither is public health, the only one is the treasurer's office, but we gotta do it there because the, we got four employees sitting there.
It's a selling point. But it does, everything it says it does, and.
I would think this could be considered part of our. Just projects with. We, we got the courthouse isn't the plan thing.
You guys weren't, were, weren't planning on putting one on our new building, the only reason I ask is. If you were planning on putting it in our new building, is it really gonna be effective, it's interior walls that aren't in contact with any ground whatsoever, because. We'll have insulation underneath the floor, on the concrete floor, it's internal walls with. Air conditioning, climate control, anyway, I can't see moisture getting sucked up remaining, so I don't, I didn't know if the proposal, we had, I remember you had talked about, we put a new building, so I wanted to make sure that. It did or didn't.
Yep.
I honestly don't think we'll need it, because we'll be in a climate controlled environment with those interior walls, and I can't imagine that's.
That wasn't in the proposal, and I would think with the new building where you got insulation underneath it.
Something that you're gonna spend money on that we probably wouldn't need.
I think we could just maybe if they, if they. Do this, they can maybe come back and test that building in a year and see. Come back and test the rest.
We're wood, we're wood frame. Climate control on the inside where those walls are, that I didn't, I don't see where you're gonna be able to pull.
Is there a vault out there for record storage?
Well.
But it's internal.
It's internal.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the main thing you'd probably get if you wanted, wanted to do that building as a preventative measure would just be to keep the slab dry. But as you said, you're gonna have insulation underneath that slab, so it's, it, it probably will be dry just fine.
I hope so, cause my house is built that way.
I just, I, I wanted to bring that up before there was any, if, if there was an additional cost to that building, it might not be something we need right away.
No, and, and the only thing I'd probably, it would have been.
It's isolated from any.
That's got its own separate zone, probably, yep, so I'd say you're probably pretty climate.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Versus this whole building, so pretty hard to control the climate in here.
I think this would be part of our courthouse.
Yeah.
Except you have two buildings that aren't in the plan, I don't think.
What, what do we call it, it's our whole general uh?
The treasurer's office and. I don't think they're in the plan.
But uh.
The legal. Has to be in.
What's that labeled under though? Oh, it's in our plan, that's, that's, not necessarily the courthouse, but it's the office. I don't know, we can look into that, I know we cover this building for sure, this is part of our.
Was this one just, was this the thirty nine thousand, this one?
And we do have money and capital.
Why don't we just take thirty nine thousand of it out of the funds that you wanna use? And the TIF, and take the rest of it out of capital.
Okay.
Why can't we do that? What do you think of that, AJ?
Okay, so we got a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve this Reno Drive project.
Is there a second?
With the breakdown of thirty nine out of the TIF and the rest out of capital, I'll second that.
Okay, move in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion will carry.
Fantastic. Well, we can come up anytime as soon as you guys are ready, so.
You just let the people in the know, know, so they can have your doors open for you.
Okay, will do. Um, do you want, should we just call you Jackie uh to, to, to schedule?
Uh, the courthouse, yeah.
Yeah, and she'll get you in touch.
I can get you in touch with Jake and Shannon.
Okay, fantastic, well, just, you want me to just call you a little later this morning?
Okay.
Okay, real good, well, we're excited to come up and see y'all and um. Get all of your county buildings nice and healthy, I think you guys can be very pleased with the results.
Good, appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Alright, anything else, buildings and grounds, other than I guess probably roll that into maintenance, snow, slash, probably just snow and a little more maintenance.
Did you guys, like what I wrote up?
Yeah, I think we should go two years.
Two years, but we, we should split them off. I don't think the same ones that do this should do wastewater treatment.
But we could probably put them all in the same, cause they might pick and choose which ones they want anyway.
Right.
Okay.
We could probably blanket them and.
You could, yeah, you could do it as, yeah.
Somehow say that you can, you don't have to do all of them.
Yeah, you can.
Let know, let us know.
I do think we're gonna do a two year contract for sure.
Yeah, well, that's just.
I think you end up with more bids.
Then they can commit to it.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, that never snows again.
Okay, so that'd be the only changes and then.
I'll get it, no, I'll, I'll get it in the paper then, and you guys can see what we come up with.
Would you give that a couple weeks?
Yeah, I can slide it, I just definitely want to turn it for the snow for us.
By first November.
Yeah.
Alright, uh Melissa, you on there right now?
Yeah, can you hear me? Alright, well, I can't turn my video on for some reason, it says it is disabled by the host.
We blame Colin, he's sitting right here laughing too.
Alright, well.
Anyway, I didn't make it, block a video.
I know, right?
These things can do almost anything.
It's scary.
What's up, Melissa?
Um, I have handed out five revolving loan fund applications, and I'm meeting with one of the businesses um today, so that's exciting. Uh, then I am meeting with Brookshire and another real estate agent, and then Heartland Power uh today to talk about the interchange. Um, Friday, I have to take off for some personal appointments, but then we have our board meeting on Monday, and I'm just gonna have it here.
Okay, perfect.
I'll work on the packet and get that sent out to you guys today, and then in the chat is the um. First Citizens Bank Economic Development Summit, if you're interested in going, it's free, if they just ask to sign up so that they can have a headcount for food. And that is Tuesday, the fourteenth, at NIAC from like ten to two.
Book Mason.
Those are actually pretty good meetings.
Yeah, I'm sure they are, but could have about a ten of the year to do them.
Yeah.
Overlaping other meetings, so.
Yeah, so, okay, anything else?
I don't know, I think that's good.
See you next week.
Anything, and updates on later water wastewater day?
Um, I gotta order some doors, so, get some bracing on overhead doors and. Aluminum swing open doors instead of steel, so they don't rot out, uh but I'm gonna get some, look at some other options on the swing open doors, because they're. Kind of very pricey, but I'm gonna go forward on a overhead door for sure, we actually get that part of the building sealed up. And still try to come up with key options in there too, so. But other than that, everything's going fairly well, we're still fighting a few things at the water treatment plant. Um, and you'll see a bill coming in, it may already be here, but that is actually something we approved last fall.
Right.
Or less, for peoples to get some parts for our water treatment plant, and they just showed up here the last two weeks, so. So that's what's out of something that was last fall, so. Other than that, uh, we're doing alright, we're still picking away, there's gonna be more to come, so.
And the money's coming in too.
Yeah. Finally, got everybody on the right pay schedule now, so.
Kind of holding our own.
That's good, that's what it should be.
And we're gonna make, we're gonna make a capital list for you, so that next year. Capital, cause there's a build, that building out there has some brickwork that needs attention already. And we've also found that we're not seeing any steel above the door openings.
It's kind of like the doors disappearing.
So, yeah, yeah, there usually you can spot those, and we're not seeing them, so I'm gonna have uh Randall, who's not here. Look at stuff, come out and assess, kind of give you an idea what needs to be fixed, and maybe we'll. Get that in the next year, but yeah, there's, we're not seeing it on any of the doors.
Nice.
That could be part of the problem we have, which, is that, that didn't stop the doors from rusting out, but it could be part of the reason why another doors wanna shut, right, because. They're gonna sag, so that's also why I can put an overhead door in, and that will affect that.
Okay.
But any other walk-in doors, we'll have to remedy that at the same time, so that may wait. Yeah. It's a, it's, yeah.
Definitely a construction oversight there.
Yep, a little bit.
Yep.
Maybe that has something to do with going.
I don't think that engineering.
Alright, uh, anything the department has right now?
Alan, I had talked to Jake about those files that we found in a folder of ours. And he would like you to move their data to their site, treasurer's folder. It needs to get out of the recorder, because it is copies of titles and registrations pertaining to DOT, not. My documents. So just. Jolene's very familiar which ones are ours, so you can work with her to figure out, and then as far as where to put them, for Jake, you could talk. It's not, there's not our data.
Okay.
So we need to get that moved.
Okay. Nothing else, I'm with supervisors, anything?
About enough for this?
Okay, thanks for next week's agenda. Second, need for discussion, all those in favor say aye.